Twenty twenty two, City Council meeting. Our invocation will be provided by Anthea Rolovo. And she's a member of the Christ on the Rock Church. And then please remain standing for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we just want to say thank you for this amazing day that you've given each and every one of us. Father, we thankful that we get to see this day, we get to make plans, we get to discuss them, Lord. So Father, this evening, we pray for everyone present here today. That whatever is discussed, whatever is important on their hearts, Lord, that there will be a conclusion or an solution provided. Father, I pray, Lord, that you bless each and every one, bless their families. And I pray, God, for insight, wisdom, knowledge, understanding to reside in this place today. I pray, God, that you bless each and every one for all the issues that will be discussed, whether it be about church, state, school, family, whatever it is, Lord, Lord. I pray that your will and purpose will prevail. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Councilmember Spears.
Here.
Perkins, Stewart.
Here, here.
Steinmeier, Hobart, Mayor Rowland.
Here. Uh, next we have, uh, citizens' request. And the first person to speak will be Wes Epperson. So Wes, please come forward, please state your address. And you have five minutes, is that correct?
Yes. Okay, I'm Wes Epperson. I live at thirty-six hundred Poplar Avenue, Independence, Missouri. Mister Mayor, council members. I'm here to speak about the, uh, the council pondering, merging the sales tax oversight committees. I'm a, been a member of the Street Sales Tax Committee since twenty fifteen. And I've been the chairman of that committee since twenty twenty-one. Uh, when I got the news about this, read the article in the paper, I did a poll of my members on the committee that served with me. The other six committees. I sent them an email. And I want you to hear their responses. Uh, first of all, is when I sent this, I said my opinion, bad idea. These committees were part of each sales tax increase question approved by the voters. And I would like to hear your thoughts. Dennis serves on my committee, said I agree with you. Gloria said, I agree, it's a bad idea. I discussed this with Mike Steinmeier, who called us. My husband is on Stormwater Committee, and he is against the idea. And Danny said, bad idea. I also called Jerry and Butch, that both serve on this committee. And they agreed, they don't think it's a good idea to try to consolidate these committees. And I also got a response, uh, from Labet. She said, my vote is no. Things get a little more complicated when addressing concerns or ideas to larger groups. And it may take more time to obtain a response or come to a consensus. And I will just tell you that we have a good committee. We take our responsibility seriously. We meet four times a year. We have a good working relationship with city staff. But consolidating these committees, however the council approaches this, I think is, is almost a break in faith that the voters had, and they approved these different sales tax increases. I can remember twenty years ago, I guess, talking to a neighbor when these proposals first began to come up. And our streets, especially our parks, were in terrible condition. And he said to me, this is a neighbor. I don't know if I'll vote for this or not, because I don't know if I can trust the council to spend the money that they're gonna collect. And my response was, well, I'm gonna support it because we're gonna have citizen oversight. And so, council members, Mister Mayor, I hope the council can reach a consensus on this. However, this needs to be, uh, handled. Maybe it is difficult getting people to serve on these committees. But I hope we try to incentivize it or encourage more people. Uh, I just hope you guys can reach a consensus. I hope this is not something that's gonna divide the council. Because I do think these oversight committees are important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Wes Epperson. Uh, Cynthia Green. If I'm correct, Cynthia, you have spoken this before, so three minutes, is that correct?
Um.
Is Cynthia spoken this before?
Once before, yes.
Yep, how?
Yes, once before.
Yeah, once before. Or was it?
No, she did not.
I don't think she did. You spoke, right. She has not spoke. Right. Yep. What happened is she brought up your form, so we're good. You can stay right there and speak. Okay. Uh, hand it to, yes, to us, and we'll take care of it for you. And then whenever you're ready, uh, go ahead and proceed.
Okay. My name is Cynthia Green. I live at one-five-zero-eight South Maywood Avenue, Independence, Missouri, six-four-zero-five-two. My husband and I are both long-term residents. I have raised, I have rose to speak. So sorry. As an affected neighbor pertaining to Solution twenty-two dash eight-one-eight, an application for short-term rental use at fourteen-thirty South Maywood Avenue, Independence, Missouri. Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, I am a grandmother, and I have raised my grandson, who is now fifteen years old, ever since he was a toddler. The last meeting on October the third brought up some thoughts and questions. Over twenty-five percent of the affected neighborhoods surrounding the corner of Fifteenth Street and Maywood Avenue have legally protested against this residential zoned home-approved area. The use of the Airbnb short-term rental how, excuse me, are, can, oh, duh-duh-duh. Have, can, how can I be okay to ignore the legal protest that affects homeowners? Why is there not more thoughtful consideration to the affected residents? Why isn't there more research about where the Airbnbs are being allowed to operate? Why isn't there a pre-application neighborhood approval system set up? And why is it how now feels very disrespectful to the neighborhood? The lack of inconsideration creates mistrust from the start. How would you agree? We were not, after all, considered or consulted about this beforehand. Sign was placed in the front yard on a Friday, and by Monday afternoon, we had letters in our mailboxes informing us that we now have a business in our residential neighborhood. The Airbnb is currently unapproved and in operation. It has been booked since and before the public hearing. Signs were put up in the yard. This has been the case for approximately three months. My question here are why does the city even need to approve an Airbnb if they are allowed to book before officially approved from the City Council? Another concern of mine, how come the city is not ordering immediate cease and desist of operation in this case? All the homes in our neighborhood are zone residential or R six. Their main function and first consideration of use is long-term single-family housing. So why is the city ignoring its own zoning laws? Why are you forcing neighborhoods to conform to wishes of investors and business? Mister Mayor, council members, the question quite enjoyment and use of my home and my affected neighbor and homes has been disrupted by comings and goings of people occupying the home and is not zoned to be rented out like a hotel.
You have one minute.
Thank you. I have friends who, I have a friend who has done fundraiser for, uh, human traffic trafficking. And we had spoken about this, the Megan's Law. The Megan's Law is where it gave us an opportunity to know about sex offenders, who they are and where they are. And before, we didn't have this knowledge. Under the Airbnb, they are not required to give us this information that if our visitors are going to be sexist offenders of any kind. So for the protection of our neighborhood, we really would like for this to be considered. Be unsafe for us and for our neighborhood, let alone maybe unsafe for the visitors because there are four registered sex offenders by this home. Finally, and the Planning Commission has now recommended eleven Airbnb, B and B short-term rentals, and now has been denied. When we last met, the count was eight, now it's eleven. At the last meeting in the city.
Cynthia, excuse me, I apologize, but you've ran out of time.
Okay, so sorry. Thank you very much for listening to my concerns.
Thank you very much.
So, sorry.
No worries. Uh, next up is David Phillips. David, please come forward, state your name, your address. And you're here to talk about Airbnbs, is that correct?
Right, correct. My name is David Phillips, and I'm at one-four-two-three South Maywood Avenue. Um, we're talking about the same matter, this Airbnb. Just to give you some quick background, approximately eight years ago, my wife and I moved into the area. Uh, it's an older area of Independence. Uh, we settled in. We know that area had, had some issues. And we've worked diligently with good neighbors, law enforcement codes, to, uh, really, we've seen a reduction in the number of drug houses, the number of hand-to-hand, open-air drug transactions that were taking place on our corner. Uh, we've reduced some of the transient walking traffic just by reporting and being aware. Um, we've, uh, got some houses to improve visually, picked up on the code violations. Essentially, we've worked hard, we've been relentless, we've forced some accountability. And, um, we've also welcomed some good new folks into the neighborhood. In effect, we've bought into our area. If we had a purpose statement, it would be something simple, like we care about the quality of life in our neighborhood. I'm gonna speak from the heart for a minute, and I ask you to look through my eyes. Something happened several weeks ago. I looked out my front window before I went to work, and I was excited to see a vehicle pull up across the street. Some folks got out and they're unpacking, and I thought, how exciting, we have a new family moving in across the street. That was a Tuesday. And told my wife, hey, look, we've got some new people, they're moving in across the street. Oh, how exciting. I went off to work. Couple days later, I look out about the same, it was a little bit later in the morning, and, uh, I saw another vehicle pull up, and it was a family with a dog, a couple of kids. Different car, and I thought, how exciting, a new family's moving in across the street. Couple of days after that, I see another vehicle pull up, and I thought, how exciting and how unusual, another family is moving in across the street. Well, my excitement turned to curiosity, turned to disappointment, turned to anger, has now turned to resentment. Folks, this is the real estate equivalent of speed dating. Little information, zero accountability. It's an infringement on homeowners and our long-term renters and our neighbors. It makes us feel vulnerable, it makes us feel unsafe. The potential of the steady flow of virtually unvetted guests, let's face it, strangers, whose only link to the property across the street is a credit card number, cycling through at will with all the negatives they, they would bring with them. I believe in human nature, but I also know that when people have no accountability and they have no stake in the neighborhood, you could see that the potential negatives would pile up there. We come in peace, we come in peace today. We would like the neighborhood to remain stable. We have an independent school bus stop directly in front of this house. I'm sure if you would ask a few of those parents, of those dozen or so kids that are picked up every morning, and those parents that are waiting for them every afternoon, they might have an opinion on whether they like out-of-town strangers offloading, coming and going. I'm sure there are plenty of good folks that would come through there, but the negatives far outweigh any of the positives. For the sake of the quality of our life in this neighborhood, I respectfully request your vote of no on this matter.
Thank you. Uh, the next up is Jackie Davis. And Jackie, please come forward, please state your address, please. And you're, you're here to talk about property issues, if I'm hearing you correctly.
My name is Jackie Davis, seventeen-twenty-five South Harvard, Independence, six-four-zero-five-two. Mayor and council members, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I notice that often people come before you if they wanna build a mini mart or car wash or for a liquor license and so forth. My question is, do any of you ever take the time to check out the area before you okay it? Do you talk to the people that live in that area? It seems like one makes a motion, another seconds it, and most of the time, all vote yes, and it becomes final. A few years ago, the City of Independence allowed a large events place to be built in the Engerwood Arts District. It wasn't actually built on Winter Road, it was built on a residential street without a parking lot. Later, they went before the council meeting to add my part of the residential street to the art district, which has nothing to do with art, to get by with what goes on. It was built directly across the street from my house that I have lived in over thirty years. Never once did they ask me about it. I am the one that has to put up with the noise people blocking my driveway. On a nice evening, I can't even have my windows or door open because even all closed up, it's loud, but no one cares. I'm positive that no one of you would have ever allowed this being built across the street from your house. I'm just here to say that maybe before you guys vote on something, you should check it out first. I moved to Missouri in nineteen fifty-seven and have lived in Independence most of those years. Independence used to be a mighty fine city, but unfortunately, it no longer is, it is full of corruption. If a person does not belong to a special group or has any clout, they just don't count. Remember that you are elected by the people, not only the special groups. Mister Mayor, you have mentioned a couple of times, if we wanted to discuss things, to come to you. But that is very difficult when you don't return our calls. Thank you for listening to me.
Next up is Butch Nesbit. Please state your address and your reason for, uh, being here tonight.
Butch Nesbit, thirty-eight-seventeen South Milton Drive in Pence, Missouri.
Mister Nesbit, just a quick question.
Yeah.
You've talked on this issue before, is that correct?
Which issue?
The, the street tax money and how the committees are used and how it's being used and all of that.
Uh, I don't remember. I might have. I speak lots of times, so I don't keep track of what I'll speak on, sorry.
Yeah. That's okay. Uh, I'll grant you the five minutes, but I, the, you know, let's.
Okay, well, I mean, it's basically why I'm here.
You think you'll need all five minutes?
I don't know, we'll see how it goes here.
All right. Please proceed, thank you.
Basically, what it is, the Street Oversight Committee, I do sit on it. Uh, you guys got bill number twenty-two dash zero-four-nine, zero-nine-four coming up tonight for a vote. The Street Strat Tax Committee, I have questioned this, and all of our members on the board have questioned this use of going to, go ahead and voting for this, but using street tax money. Uh, it is the Nolan Road Ling Court project. Uh, there's gotta be something shady going on here, 'cause the, it keeps wanting to go on, and I don't understand why. Some people don't have any answers for me. I did call and make sure that the property was not owned by the city again last week. Basically, all they have is the, uh, right-of-way rights on there, which we have street signs and stuff like that. So I don't understand what's going on there, but I don't want to see us get in trouble by using the street tax money to pay for this project, 'cause it is a C I, and I've been seeing it on my agenda now for over a year and a half. I just, and I've been bringing this up, and they said there was nothing that we could do about it on the committee I sat on. Even though we wanted to vote on it, they said there's nothing we can do about it. They said it's all up to the council to do something, so I've been asking you guys to do something about it. Now it's up for a vote here, so I'm saying that we should not do this because this is not using the street tax money wisely. You got, you're gonna spend almost three-quarters of a million dollars here. Street improvements we use over the years, over a year, is about a little over three million dollars. So we're taking one-third of the money just for a development project so they can get in and out of what used to be Ventures and Kmart. But they say that they guarantee it's gonna be a hotel there, some people, some of the council people are. So I don't understand why is everybody else guaranteeing this when there's nothing like that happening, 'cause basically, when it's Kmart or Venture, we probably had a hundred to two-hundred cars a day going there. If you're gonna have a hotel there, you're gonna have less than a hundred cars or a hundred and fifty cars a day. So I'm saying, it's not a traffic issue, it's not a safety issue, like I said. You guys said eminent domain also. Eminent domain is not a good thing. You guys brought that up last time. It is not a good thing. Eminent domain was done to some property on Nolan Road over twenty-some years ago, and it's still sitting vacant. So that is not a good thing to do eminent domain, I'm sorry. You gotta remember stuff. Also, this is still under a legal precedent, as I can tell, with the people who want it over a court suit or something like that, I just hear things. I don't know the whole answer, I have not heard the whole story, but there's something, gotta be shady going on back here. Plus, I also hear, well, saw in the council minutes that, uh, the Nolan Road Improvement District is gonna spend one-point-seven million dollars of the taxpayers' money that they pay to put in the developments for Cargo Largo Street Improvements. Not the development, but our tax dollars from the Nolan Road Improvement District. That's one-point-seven million dollars. That's a lot of money of our tax money. But you guys have no say in that, that's strictly up to the Nolan Road Improvement District people to do that. So there's nothing we can do about that. But if, if the Nolan Road Improvement District wants this development to go on down here by Ling Court, why don't they spend their money and do that? 'Cause they still have over a million dollars in their budget that they can do it with. So that's where I'm sitting at. I just ask that you guys vote no on this project, 'cause it's taking street tax money, which is not for streets, really. It's for the development. When you have a development, they make their own entrances and exits, and do the curbs and sidewalks and stuff like that. We don't, so that's why the city should not have to do this. That's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Nesbit. Uh, next up, Mister Love, please state your name and your reason for, uh, your presentation.
Kenneth Love, sixteen, one-six, eight-zero-eight East George Franklin Drive, Independence, six-four-zero-five-five. I'm here to speak of the actions that took place last week when I come to City Hall. And this is over the community development, uh, code enforcement sweep. On October fourth, twenty twenty-two, Independence launched a community development sweep. For some reason, code enforcer, blank, blank, I won't give the code enforcer's name, failed to inspect Walgreens, Bee Ge Wagner Glass, Rent-A-Center, Summer Ridge Shopping Center, Starbucks, Great Clips, and Bell Tone Phone. I specifically drove by each one of these locations before I came to the meeting this evening. Again, my whistleblower is the one that informed me about this sweep that was going to be taking place. I waited until Friday, when I received a code that my property has some violations on it. But what I don't understand is my phone calls started at eight o'clock in the morning to several different members within the City of Independence from the Code Enforcement Department to the Code Enforcement Department head, Tom Scannell. No return phone calls. So I figured it was best for me on Friday afternoon to come to City Hall and find out exactly what my whistleblower said. So first thing I do when I walk in, I walk up to the desk. Um, there's no, nobody there can help me with code enforcement. I asked for, uh, Mister Tom Scannell. Mister Tom Scannell, I was told, is no longer in the building, he's gone home for the day. So I asked to speak to Adam Norris. Adam Norris is upstairs, uh, we'll let him know you're on the way up, Mister Love. Um, eventually, after several minutes of waiting for Mister Norris to come out to speak, Mister Norris comes out, opens the doors, and he raises his hand, "Five minutes. You've got five minutes, that's all you have." And I said, "Excuse me, this may take longer than five minutes." Now, I thought Mister Norris worked for the, um, residents of Independence. But it seems like he don't, because he only had five minutes. Yes, I did not call and make an appointment. So I'll give a little leeway and respect that Mister Norris only had five minutes. But I wanna highly thank Mayor Rory Rowland's secretary, Ms. Osborne. Thank you very much for after speaking with another resident that was here that wasn't happy over some things going on with IPNL. She took her time to listen of my concerns. I feel with all of these businesses, and she understands, and she took notes, I feel all of these businesses that was not inspected before getting to my property location, I feel targeted. So my question to the City Council, City Manager, how many streets north of Twenty-third? How many blocks, how many houses was inspected?
You have one minute.
I, as a resident, deserve to know exactly how many had code violations due to the fact, not only after my place, which is commercial residential, was inspected, they failed to inspect Jim Carter trucks. Um, the residents behind Jim Carter trucks, the business next door, the empty lot that sits on the next corner, where it's a lot of wood out, mud, asphalt piled up. I wonder if these people got a permit to dump all this stuff there? Makes our city look even trashier. Thank you, council. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Mister Love. April Preston is next. And please state your, uh, your name and your address, please.
April Preston, I'm 10920 East Winter Road. Um, I am speaking on behalf of 1430 South Maywood. Um, I am an owner of that property. I purchased the property about four months ago from the original owner, who built the house in 1958. Um, I've been managing the apartment that is connected to that property for about three years. So I've kind of formed a friendship with the owner. Um, it is zoned as a single-family slash duplex, because it is in a duplex neighborhood. Um, I did argue with the, with the council on that before, but he's like, "No, it's a duplex neighborhood." So, um, basically, we're trying to, um, open an Airbnb there, a short-term rental. I currently have one in Inglewood that I call Stone House. It's located at 1734 South Northern. And, um, I believe, and hopefully I can answer any questions or concerns, and everyone else can soon know and not just have to believe, that this really is a benefit to the neighborhood. Stone House has, um, been one to come with, you know, all the normal issues of the neighborhood at the beginning. It actually opened during COVID, um, and so that was, that was exciting. But now, if you talk to any of the neighbors who live there, they're not only on board, they're actually using it for their own extended family to stay. So a couple of things I wanted to point out. Number one, we're having an open house. And I sincerely apologize for not scheduling that ahead of time. I honestly, we had a garage sale for two weekends, and I felt like I met a lot of people in the neighborhood. And we gave a lot of stuff away that we didn't need in the house. And I, I just did not take that into consideration, and for that, I, I very strongly apologize. I should have done that. So we now have an open house scheduled November 2nd. I've got a bunch of invitations here that I would like to pass out, if that's okay. Um, it's from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, and I'm gonna be giving a tour of the home and answering any questions. Um, I also wanna share the story of Maywood, which I think's pretty cool. Um, but a couple of things I wanted to also address. Our normal guest stays 90 days. We, we have had two guests at, at Maywood. One of them is there long-term for three months. The reason they're seeing people come and go is because this guest lives in Utah. And he is actually a friend of the tenant that lives there. And so he had asked if he could stay in the property. Of course, we thought we were going to have our permit, and so we said yes. And he booked his work here. He's working for the, um, the temple here locally on the square. And his name is Renee. He has a gorgeous family. Um, and so he's been staying there. Um, he'll be staying there through December, actually. So he'll be there during the open house. He said everyone is welcome to meet him as well. Um, and that is just on my regular landlord rental license. He is on a signed lease. Um, so then everyone, anyone else, the only thing I can think of as far as guests would be, if they're seeing the cleaner. Um, she has two daughters, and she comes and goes and brings, um, people with her. And then, um, um, my workers, and he also brings his kid and a dog. So that could be as well. Um, but I hope everyone can come to that, and I'm, I really don't mean to cause issues or, or trouble. I'm definitely not planning on running a hotel or anything that is going to cause the neighborhood issues.
You have one minute.
This home is beautiful, and it is fully furnished with items from the 1960s. Of course, I've had to replace some things, new beds and things, but I've made everything look as authentic as I can. And, um, I plan for the average price to be 120 a night. So I definitely see this as being somewhere where a higher-end guest, um, come and stay and then explore the rest of Independence, which I know they do when they stay in Inglewood. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation for Best Truman Day, Madam City Clerk.
Whereas Elizabeth Virginia Wallace Truman, wife of the 33rd President of the United States, Harry S. Truman, passed away in the early morning of October 18th, 1982, at the age of 97. Mrs. Truman meant a lot to the citizens of the city. She avoided publicity and news coverage concerning herself and her affairs, but Mrs. Best Truman's influence on her community was always positive and substantial. And whereas, as a young woman, she was lively and an important part of the town's social circles. She was one of the founding members of the Community Welfare League of Independence and served as Vice President of that organization. Her dignity as the wife, companion, and confidant of Harry S. Truman through his years as a soldier, businessman, and politician had become a matter of public records. Her years as First Lady were marked with the same dignity, self-containment, and she demonstrated as a wife of a county judge or the wife of a senator from Missouri. And whereas a proud and quiet individual, she executed the many necessary public duties as First Lady with inherent dignity all her own. She withstood criticism and inquisitiveness of peers and press with a demeanor that became her signature. She refused to let power and position change her attitude about herself or the world and treated all that she met with the same courteous and kind respect. A sense of duty combined with a deep love for home and family and a practical outlook on life's events helped to make Best Truman a great First Lady. Mrs. Truman gave the City of Independence, by her example, the very best in dignity, courage, humility, and quiet forbearance in a world that oftentimes loses sight of the importance of these virtues. Whereas the city of her birth felt a great loss and voided her passing. Words are inadequate to express what the woman meant to the citizens of her community. We were honored by her residency, privileged by her acquaintance, and instructed by her commitments and ideals as illustrated through her own exemplary life. She is missed greatly. Therefore, Rory R. Rowland, Mayor of the City of Independence, hereby proclaims October 18th, 2022, as Best Truman Day.
Okay, and, uh, I just got a note. We have a scout in attendance, uh, from Troop 201, uh, out of Maywood Church, working on his citizenship and community merit badge. So would you, uh, like to stand and be recognized? There we go. And later I'll ask for a critique, is that okay? All right, uh, that brings us to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the reports and recommendations of the City Manager.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussions or any items you'd list to pull, any council members list to pull?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I'd like to pull 22818, please.
22818. Okay. Anyone else? Going once, going twice. All right, um, we'll pull 22818. And then, uh, if there's nothing else to be pulled, Madam City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Fierce.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. Okay, uh, that'll bring us to 22818. And councilman, I'll give you the floor and give me your thoughts.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is, uh, 22818 is the resolution approving a short-term rental, 1430 South Maywood Avenue. Um, we've, we've heard information from both parties here. My request is that we postpone this until the November 14th City Council meeting and allow the, uh, public and community engagement to take place and have that open house uh, take place to see if kind of conversations and maybe some, some information, some misinformation, uh, can be cleared up and see what the community would like to have over there. It's not a guarantee that this is, uh, going to, um, be something that is approved, but it's definitely gives a delay to allow the conversation to, to continue just a little bit further. So I would make the, um, make the motion to delay until November 14th.
I'll second that. And hold on just one second. We're double-checking on the schedule for November, what that will look like. I'm thinking it might be November 21st. Well, and I could be wrong, but I just wanna double-check on that, councilman. You want it on the first meeting or the, or the second meeting in November?
So the open house is November 2nd, so it would have to be in the...
So November, November 9th, our first meeting, and the 21st would be the next one.
You're correct.
So can I, could we do the 21st, if it's good, please? Give us a little extra time.
That will work.
That'll be good, okay. That way I'll entertain new motions for, to, uh, do it on the 21st. So would you like to make a motion for the 21st?
I'll make the motion for the 21st.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll take a, uh, vote on postponing it till November 22nd, or excuse me, November 21st. So, um, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. So what that is, is item 22818 will be postponed till November 21st. Okay, and that will bring us to our regular agenda and public hearings, if I'm correct. Okay, uh, so we'll open up the first public hearing.
A public hearing for the application by Jeff Lovelace requesting a rezoning from C2 General Commercial and R6 Single Family Residential to R6 Single Family Residential for the property located at 1322 East US 24 Highway. New information only.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Rick Arroyo, the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. Uh, this rezoning was considered by Planning Commission on September 13th of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. Uh, this is to rezone a house along US 24 Highway. It's currently a C2 zoning. Uh, probably back in 1965, there was a strip zoning of commercial all along this area. Uh, this case and the one after that are all part of the same piece of property, uh, but they're separate cases because they're two different zonings. In this situation, the house is actually zone C2. There's a piece of property behind it that's zoned R6. The property owner wishes to sell this property. Uh, currently, it's legal non-conforming in that configuration. It is being used as a residential house. So he's wanting to rezone this to R6 from the C2 to match the R6 behind the property. And I have no new information to add.
Bill number 22-095, An Ordinance Approving a Rezoning from District C2 General Commercial to District R6 Single Family Residential for the property at 1322 East US 24 Highway in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I'll go very quickly. Uh, I'd like to ask Mr. Arroyo a question.
Please.
Mr. City Manager.
Please, thank you.
Yes, that'd be, that'd be fine. Thank you for asking.
Thank you. Um, I wa, I wasn't following along very good. So there's a commercial zone property on the 24 Highway frontage?
Correct.
And a residential right behind it?
Correct.
And so they're both, what are they going to then?
So they would both be going to residential in this one.
Okay.
Yes.
Is that in any way out of place for the spot that they're at on 24?
So there are some areas that are residential along the route. Um, right now, currently, it's all in frontage there, strip zone C2. Keep in mind, though, that when it goes to an R6, anything that, because currently it's a residential house, so it is being used as residential house, so they can't really do anything with it. Um, they can't basically re, remodel it or, um, use it for anything other than the house that's legal non-conforming. If it does go to an R6, it can easily go back to a commercial 2. It's always easier to, uh, downzone than it is to upzone in many cases. It wouldn't necessarily be out of character. It would be a, a spot in this zone that is an R6. Uh, but yes, basically, you have an R6 behind it, commercial where the house is at. And so it's, in some sense, a corrective zoning for this area.
Okay. I, I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, uh, Mr. City Manager. Um, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else have other questions? Seeing no other further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. New public hearing, Madam City Clerk.
A public hearing for the application by Jeff Lovelace requesting a rezoning from C2 General Commercial and R6 Single Family Residential to C2 General Commercial for the property located at 1308, 1310, and 1312 East US 24 Highway. New information only.
Thank you again. This rezoning was also considered by Planning Commission on September 13th. The Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. This is right next to the same area, um, and this is a C2 zoning, and it is a C2 use. However, behind it is residential, and so the goal here is to make that whole strip resi, or, commercial, C2, to make it more in line. So you would have C2 completely and R6 completely. So no new information to add.
Bill number 22-096, An Ordinance Approving a Rezoning from District R6 Single Family Residential to District C2 General Commercial for the rear of the property at 1308, 1310, and 1312 D US 24 Highway in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And that brings us to non-ordinance items, is that correct?
We have one more public hearing.
Okay. I did skip it. Please forgive me. Next public hearing, Madam City Clerk.
A public hearing for the application by Kevin Perrin requesting a rezoning from RA Residential Agricultural and R4 PUD Single Family Residential Low Density Planned Unit Development to RA Residential Agricultural for the property located at 2631 South Lobbe Cemetery Road. New information only.
Thank you. This, uh, rezoning was considered by Planning Commission on September 13th also. Planning Commission did recommend in favor of it. Uh, this is a property that's way on the eastern border of the city. It's between Lobbe Cemetery Road and M7 Highway. Uh, the property owner acquired a piece of property that was, uh, R4 PUD, and they currently sit on a piece of property that's RA. Uh, they're wishing to combine that and make it all residential agricultural, and, uh, no new information to add.
Gonna close the public hearing, Madam City Clerk.
Bill number 22-097, An Ordinance Approving a Rezoning from District RA Residential Agricultural and District R4 PUD Single Family Low Density Residential Planned Unit Development to District RA Residential Agricultural for the property at 2631 South Lobbe Cemetery Road in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fierce.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And that motion also carries, so all three of the public hearings were approv, or, and all the items on the public hearings were approved. Uh, Madam City Clerk, that brings us to non-ordinance items.
Bill number 22-819, A Resolution Amending Resolution Number 6846, in updating language in Sections 2 and 3.
Any discussion on this? Mr. City Manager, would I, could I just indulge just a brief summation so folks know what we're talking about here and what we're doing?
Since about April, the council has been discussing getting a citizen's commission appointed to serve as a review committee of the city charter. Just as a reminder to everyone, it's been some time, at least since the 1980s, since the city engaged in a comprehensive review of the charter and whether or not the voters of the city wish to amend any portion of that. So, the council, a few months ago, after much healthy discussion, agreed to a process by which those commissioners would be selected. However, in reviewing the last study session where this was discussed and the resolution that was passed by the council, the final intent specifically around the mayor's appointments to the commission was not captured in that resolution. So, in order to affirm that intent, if that is in fact still the intent, this resolution needs to be amended to allow the mayor to have the opportunity to appoint someone, some bodies to the commission.
Okay. And so, what I'm going to do with no major objections, limit the debate to just talking about this item and the mayor's ability to be able to choose two items that we can vote. For citizens who might be watching this, we have held back on the vote due to this error in drafting, and this is just going to correct that error. It is not going to change anything else on it, and therefore, I want to limit the discussion and the debate to that item. So, with that being said, I'll be happy to indulge anyone on talking about this, or I can certainly give a summation of what it does. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, call and roll.
Councilmembers Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And that brings us to ordinances, and that does in fact pass. 22-819 does pass.
Bill number 22-093, an ordinance repealing Resolutions Number 4530, 4822, 4889, 4691, 4739, 6343, and 4956, creating the Local Tax Oversight Committee.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. One of our residents and longtime citizens and committee members, I think, made some good points tonight in the comments he made before our council meeting. I very much am in favor of consolidating where we can. I very much am in favor of creating efficiencies where we can. I also am in favor of making sure the citizens feel heard and, and feel like they have sufficient oversight of things. I don't want to vote this down, but I'm not prepared to vote yes for it either. I would ultimately make a motion to suspend this indefinitely. Perhaps we can spend a little more time looking at our committee structure generally and see if there are other efficiencies we can seek overall that might take some of the pressure off of these, at least over the next few months perhaps. So, I will make a motion to suspend this indefinitely.
There's been a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll suspend this indefinitely. Pardon me?
Oh, sorry.
So, you could, please take roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And that ordinance has been suspended indefinitely.
Bill number 22-094, an ordinance finding determining declaring the necessity of acquiring temporary construction and grading easements, general utility easements, and right-of-way for the Lynn Court and Nolan Road Intersection Alignment Project, product number 512101, authorizing the negotiation imminent domain proceedings if necessary, approving the plans and specifications for the project, authorizing the use of experts as needed, authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in conjunction with the project. Second and final reading.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, can you explain why we're doing this now instead of waiting until the development possibly comes in there?
The traffic information that we have for that area indicates that the alignment issue is causing some different traffic issues, inconveniences, et cetera. I know our office, and I believe the mayor's office, has been contacted quite frequently by one resident who rightfully has pointed out a lamp post arm that's been hit by a semi that was trying to make a turn there because of the narrow radius of that area. So, by aligning that road through there, it addresses some of those traffic congestion issues and then hopefully promotes continued development in that node.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Proceed.
Just a question for the City Manager.
Sure.
So, reading the, the language on this about imminent domain and other things, that is just in conjunction with just the temporary construction easements. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct. So, whenever the city is doing a public improvement, part of that initial project scope is to make the acquisition, acquisition that's necessary for the right-of-way because the city, of course, doesn't do public improvements on private property. So, acquiring and making sure we have the correct easements to work in the right-of-way and do the improvements in the public realm authorizes us to begin those proceedings if necessary. But again, imminent domain proceeding is rather complex and lengthy and would involve a series of actions, including additional votes by the council and legal approval by a Jackson County judge. So, this just initiates those if, if it were to come to that. In my tenure as manager, I cannot remember one of these construction projects offhand where we've had to utilize imminent domain to get the necessary easements.
So, this is just standard language that we would typically see in that kind of a...
On these kind of construction projects, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, we've heard on a couple of meetings the concern of this being private property and utilizing tax monies to make these improvements. I don't know that, that we've thoroughly addressed those. I mean, is there a way to confirm to residents and the taxpayers that this is in fact, this is just for the commercial area? Are the, the public use area not, not a private area? I mean, how, how do we prove and how do we put at ease that we're not using tax dollars to improve a private, a private company or land use?
Yeah, you can go out on the Jackson County Parcel Viewer, which the county has all the property ownership information, and so that will show where each of those plats are owned, who owns those, taxable value, all that information, and then all of the public right-of-way area through there as well. So, off the top of my head, that's probably what I would recommend the best place for somebody that's interested in this or another project to determine what's public right-of-way and public property and what's falling into that private realm that you're referencing.
So, so you're gonna, I'm sorry.
No.
So, you're gonna stand tonight and say that this is just for the public use area, not, not, we're not gonna spend any money in, in private-owned property for any of this, these improvements?
Well, if we have to acquire any of those easements to make it public property, that's part of what you're voting on tonight is to give us the authority to do that. But at the end of the day, any area we would be working in would be publicly held, right-of-way property, et cetera.
I understand it. So, so, but imminent domain will be used if we can't reach some resolution on it?
It would be initiated, and then it would ultimately be in part the council's decision to decide if you want to proceed, and then that case made to the judge about if this is a public use that would merit that condemnation.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, reading this, the language that talks about imminent domain and the like, this is language that is used in virtually all improvements. Is that correct? That we throw in the, the use of imminent domain just in case those actions don't, or, or normal actions don't receive a result? That we have this information, imminent domain, put in here in all the ones that we do. Is that correct?
Right. So, for, for this particular project, I'll start small with it. We need to acquire more right-of-way in there to put in all of the infrastructure necessary to widen, align, all of the traffic safety improvements that are being made there. Now, more broadly, with this and other public improvement projects, these are the standard boilerplate languages that are used to front-end of the project, allow staff to go negotiate acquisition of those easements. And if we come into a place where we're not able to reach an agreement through negotiation, then we have the authority to initiate. But initiate is one step of many, again, on that road to full condemnation.
Correct. So, just for reiteration, this is a standard boilerplate that we use when we acquire any type of roadwork, right-of-way initiatives.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I just have one more question. I'm sorry.
Please proceed.
I know we, we're, we want to see this area developed. Got a lot of legal issues taking place on that property. So, whatever we're designing, are we, are we putting the cart before the horse before we get to that place where the property is sold off, plans brought to us? How do we know how much easement we need? How much do we know what we need to expand in terms of the, the turnoff of Nolan? How do we know all these things? In other words, are we gonna go through this process, spend a lot of money, and then with, let's say it's a huge project, everybody keeps talking about a hotel, a huge project, is this something that we could potentially have to go back and redo to utilize, you know, the, the facility based on the, the traffic that will be generated into that area and out of that area? Are we doing this in advance of plans that we know that are eventually going to come before us? It may not be when I'm here, but it's gonna come here.
So, for, for the present tense, the project is gonna be engineered and designed around the different traffic studies, the traffic counts, the engineer, Public Works Engineering Manual, that kind of information. If development comes into the area that we all call the Kmart or venture further back, that will, part of that project is going to require a traffic study, and if it's found that that's gonna generate additional load that the current alignment can't handle, then that applicant, and I don't want to speak for future planning commissions or councils, but typically what we see is they include as a condition of approval for, you know, rezonings or project approval, that they have to make those improvements in order to receive their approval.
I, I just, I just have a concern that we're just gonna be putting money into something that we just don't have any real plans moving forward. I think the, the area serves quite well to go get custard, and, and I've never been able to. The lines are too long. So, so I get it, but I just, I just don't want to be spending or throwing good money at bad if we don't have a plan of what that large plot of land is gonna be developed for. So, it makes me, it, it just makes me a little uneasy when we start trying to address the future, and we don't know what the future looks like, and we don't know what the traffic will be, and we don't have all, all the answers to, to go out and spend a lot of money on this. So, I'm just a little uncomfortable with the project as it sets.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Very briefly, I'm gonna vote yes on this item. I've been, I grew up right around the street from that area. I remember when Jerry Brazel had the Amoco Station across the street, and that intersection has not been okay for as long as I've been alive. We've got an old policeman sitting in the gallery that has written a number of tickets in that very vicinity. I know it'll be great for the existing businesses. I do, I'm willing to take the gamble that it would aid in development, and I'll be voting yes. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, please call and roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
No.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Brings us, and that motion did pass for 22-094. And can you read the next one for us, please?
Bill number 22-098, an ordinance approving a plan for an industrial development project authorizing the city of Independence, Missouri to issue two series of taxable industrial development revenue bonds in a combined principal amount not to exceed $55 million and authorizing and improving certain documents and actions in connection therewith. Second and final reading.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call and roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And that brings us to first readings.
Bill number 22-099, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept a grant from Mid America Regional Council in the amount of $129,000 for the city's senior adult nutrition site program for fiscal year 2022 to 2023 and execute the Amendment Community Center Services Agreement, making the necessary appropriations, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions, and authorizing certain future appropriations. Bill number 22-100, an ordinance approving a special use permit to operate a bed and breakfast at 910 East Manor Road in Independence, Missouri. Bill number 22-101, an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a certain contract for the sale of real estate in exchange for payment of $23,205 for land designated as city surplus property, 12820 East 43rd Terrace South, and to do all the things necessary to consummate said sale. The next two ordinances are emergency ordinances, and they will receive two readings. Bill number 22-508, an ordinance approving a final plat for the new town at Harmony, Plat 3, in Independence, Missouri, and declaring an emergency. Bill number 22-508, an ordinance approving a final plat for the new town at Harmony, Plat 3, in Independence, Missouri, and declaring an emergency. Second and final reading.
Any discussion on 22-508, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, why are we reading this as an emergency?
That's been city council's standing direction as long as I've worked for the city for the last decade. So, we just continue to operate off of that direction until we get different direction from the council.
So, there's no reason other than...
We follow the rules until somebody tells us there's new rules.
So, there's no pressing issue on this, that this needs to be done tonight?
It's not as far as I know.
Okay, then I'll be voting no.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So, there's no, there's no, I mean, the developer is not under pressure to open it up and begin, I mean, they've run out of lots? Or are they just ready to open up this plat and move forward?
My understanding is that, yeah, they are. First phase is pretty much sold out now. They've done their grading work and such on this next plat, and then the fourth is mostly about traffic issues, not so much land issues. So, they're ready to start, you know, constructing... pressing emergencies.
So, you're not, we're not, I'm just trying to clarify, this is just because of the rules of how we...
Yeah, that's just, we've been following...
But it's, we're not declaring that they've got to have this open to move forward.
That's correct, sir.
Okay, so, so it's by definition not an emergency, just under rules, we're handling it.
Kind of a past practice, yes, sir.
Got it, all right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
May I address Mr. Walker?
Please proceed.
So, I would hate to, Mr. Stewart, Councilmember Stewart, pardon me, makes a good point. I don't particularly want to change the rule on somebody midstream, so I'll vote yes on this. If there's a better practice, or something that would be a little more efficient, or maybe transparent, or open about this process, is that something your office could take a look at and let us know if there's a better, best practice on something like this?
You'd be happy to.
Thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? And this also requires five positive votes to pass, so Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
No.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. According to the five-vote rule, however, this item does not pass at this time. All right, Madam City Clerk?
Bill number...
Go ahead.
Bill number 22-509, An Ordinance Approving a Final Plat for the New Town at Harmony, Plat 4 in Independence, Missouri, and Declaring an Emergency. Bill number 22-509, An Ordinance Approving a Final Plat for New Town at Harmony, Plat 4 in Independence, Missouri, and Declaring an Emergency. Second and final reading.
Any further discussion on 22-509? Please proceed.
Before we vote these down as they are, because they've gone through the system as prescribed, I guess what is the legal ramifications for voting this down, and does this trigger in different, well, the ramifications? Can they come before the council within a 12-month period, or what happens when this is voted down?
I'm going to answer, I'm going to look at Mr. Schenell and make sure. Fundamentally, this ends it here, you have, you know, with 22-508 has already been voted on, so because it was done as an emergency, that's why it required the five votes, it didn't have that, it has now failed. So, that bill is done, so nothing prevents that bill from coming back to you all as a, you know, as a new bill, as a new item, but obviously that's going to take time, it would then go through, you know, in theory, go through two readings at that point for the normal process if it wasn't read as an emergency.
Okay.
But it's going to obviously delay them being able, I mean, at this point, we're looking at the second meeting in November. Okay, so that's the only one still in play at the moment. If either Councilmember Steinmeier or Stewart wanted to reconsider 508 as a, to go to undo that vote, we could treat it like a first reading and then have the second reading on the first meeting in November, so that would push it up a couple of weeks.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I, maybe I made a mistake, I thought that if it was voted down, this would come back to us next, the next meeting, is that not right?
As a non-emergency is what I'm hearing you say.
Yes, that's what I, was my understanding.
It could, it could come back to you, yes, but it's going to have to go, there's going to be, are there notice requirements for this or no? No. Okay. So, it would come back to you all at the first meeting, it could come back to you all at the first meeting in November.
And that's what I was hoping that it would do.
Okay.
So, what do I need to do to make that happen?
Can I intervene?
So, just to be clear here, the developer, we move forward in this way because this is the longstanding practice for the city, because this facilitates development, and it's been a practice that the council wanted to be development-friendly, okay? So, this developer has submitted, based on those rules, this does fundamentally change what they, what they're doing. Had they known this was going to be the expectation, they probably would have gone forward with first reading tonight, so this does delay their project another four weeks before they can even proceed, so this is problematic for the developer.
Right.
Just want to be clear there.
No, thank you very much. Yeah, and so the question I hear Councilmember Stewart asking is this, is there a way to reconsider the motion as it stands now, and there is? If I'm correct, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Cover or Mr. Walker or Miss City Clerk, what we can do as a body is if someone were to make a motion right now to reconsider...
I think it has to be someone on the losing end.
Huh?
It has to be somebody, it can't be myself or Councilmember Steinmeier.
It can.
It actually would have to be.
Right.
Because you two, otherwise, because you two were on the prevailing side.
Well, it has to be someone on the prevailing side.
It has to be someone on the prevailing side.
I'll make a motion to reconsider.
Okay, what we've got to do first, though, if I can to do this, because we've got two motions on the floor right now, what we've got to do is, this is what I'm going to do from a procedure standpoint, and see if you folks all agree with me if there's no problems. We will basically suspend 22-509, set it aside, you know, and then, like we didn't read it, then go back to 22-508. Councilmember Stewart, you can make a motion to reconsider on 22-508, get a second, and then we go through, and then we need five votes to make that happen. Would that still be sufficient, or do we just need four votes? We still need five votes, in Parliament, in Roberts' Rules of Order.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Okay, we are currently on 22-509.
That's correct.
If our council members are in agreement to consider this a first reading as opposed to an emergency, if that's what the motion to reconsider on the prior one would do, then what we should do is take the vote on this measure as it stands before us and make whatever motion we need to make to convert it to a non-emergency, so that this bill is on a first reading. Once we do that, take that vote to convert it to a first reading, then we could go back and reconsider 22-508, should the council members agree, and just trans, switch that to a first reading. Does that make sense? So, we can vote once now to make this a non-emergency, then we can go back and reconsider the prior one, and then consider that and vote on a non-emergency.
So, your motion, if I'm hearing you correctly right now, is on 509, basically make a motion to amend?
I will make a motion to amend 22-509, removing the declaration of emergency and considering this a first reading.
Second.
And to be clear, this, because we're amending it now, that this actually only requires four votes to amend it to make it a non-emergency. It was five votes when it was an emergency. For trying to remove the emergency, it's four votes, I just want to make that clear before everybody votes.
Right.
So, I'd say let's vote on this before we all forget what we're doing.
Right, no, no, that's fine, so please renew your motion on 22-509, please.
I would move to remove the language declaring this an emergency, that will, by operation of language, revert this to a first reading.
Okay.
Which will require no further vote tonight at that point.
Exactly, we'd only take basically a parliamentarian vote to say it's a non-emergency, basically voting on the amendment.
Correct.
Right.
And a second then.
And, all right, we've got a second, so we've got a motion and a second to amend this to be a non-emergency item. Any further discussion on that item? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please take the roll on the amendment for the non-emergency.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
So, 22-509 is now declared a first, excuse me, a non-emergency, but it is always on a first read, it'll need to be read the second time at the next council meeting. All right, very good, that'll bring us back to, I would entertain a motion from Councilmember Stewart.
I'll make the motion. Motion, consider 22...
22-508, the matter failed, in order to bring it back up, the prevailing side has to make the motion, and that is why we're doing it this way. So, with that being said, we've got the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to reconsider 22-508, and also make it a non-emergency, if I'm hearing.
No, we'd have to reconsider it first.
Right, the motion to reconsider, okay, so anyone else for the discussion? Okay, Madam City Clerk, please take the roll on the motion to reconsider 22-508.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
So, 22-508 is now been passed to reconsider, and now we'll have a discussion about making it a non-emergency, if I'm correct.
Correct.
Okay, any discussion on making this a non-emergency? I'll need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I would make a motion to remove the language declaring 22-508 an emergency. By operation of removing that language, it would then become a first reading.
Okay.
Second.
Very good, we've got a motion and a second, any further debate on this? Okay, I just want to say something before we vote on it. Members of the council, let's make sure that we're square on how we're going to use these going forward. In my opinion, we're not declaring non-emergency, we're not, we are not changing policy that the city staff has been following. We're going to continue to change, say, you know, continue to follow that policy until we as a body say we are not going to carry items like this as declaring them an emergency, allowing the staff to declare them an emergency. We're still going to allow that practice. Is that make sense, Mr. Cover?
Yes, I hear what you're saying, and that makes sense. We're going to need to check as staff and make sure, I mean, this, while this has been the practice, I, we need to make sure this isn't codified or formalized anywhere, because if it is, then that would need to be amended if that is your intent.
Right.
So, I'm hearing what you're saying, and we're, message received, but we are going to check a couple of things to make sure that we can follow that intent.
Right, and if we need to reinforce that we're going to follow the policy as it's been stated, we'll do that, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone here has no objections for us proceeding in that way going forward. Any other further discussion? Okay, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 22-508 and making, amending it to be a non-emergency.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
Okay, and that'll bring us to Councilmember Comments, and so I'll start down here. Councilmember Stewart, please proceed.
Nothing, hi, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you, Mayor. Over the weekend, last Saturday specifically, I was able to attend, and some of us were here, able to attend a square table fundraiser. That was a great event, very well attended, a great time, beautiful evening, and what that is, it's a fundraiser to go to the Independence Square Association to help with their different beautifications, public arts, the different planters and different things you see around Independence Square that they're doing, just a little extra to keep the place looking good, looking clean, looking fresh, so it was a fun event, you know, it was good to see a lot of friends there, a lot of the business owners that were there, a lot of friends that live in the community in the neighborhood were there, so good stuff.
Very good, thank you. Please proceed.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I too enjoyed the square table event, it was a good event, and one that I think does a lot of good to help, you know, my wife and I talked as we left, that, you know, a community that doesn't have a square, that is a solid part of the community, is a community that needs, you know, that needs some help, and I do think we've done, you know, Independence has done a good job over the years with the square. On a different note, want to just let the public know that next Monday, October 24th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., there will be a, Community Services League will be having a donation drive. The Independence Health, Fire, and Police Departments are basically running this for them, to collect toy donations valued somewhere between $10 or $15 for boys and girls ages zero to eight, and that'll be at the Independence Uptown Market, and so we invite the public to come out from 4:00 to 7:00, make donations to support the Community Services League Christmas store. That's all I have.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Hobart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of my fellow members on the council, our condolences go out to the firefighter that was killed in an automobile accident last weekend on his way home from work. I don't know details, it's not my place to speak them, but Chief Short, please, Mr. Walker, please let our folks know that we're thinking about them. That's not necessarily much, but it matters, and we appreciate our public safety folks quite a bit. And on a slightly lighter side, I just wanted to say that Al Rudd has been in the gallery the last few meetings. All of us that went to grade school in Independence sometime in the last, I don't know, 40 or 50 years, knew and remember Officer Friendly quite fondly, so we thank him for his service and continued interest. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Steinmeier?
Yes, thank you. I too, with the news of the passing of our firefighter, it just, it made my heart so heavy. We have had way too much of this in our city. There is, and I'm going to put on my ministerial hat for a second, I spent 15 years in ministry, and I'll tell you, when public safety officials are being, come under this type of warfare, it just, they're never off duty, whether they're at a station, patrolling, or headed home, they could be called tonight and they'll come respond to the need of the city, so they're never off duty. So, to have the losses that we've had in the last few weeks is just, it just makes my heart so heavy, and I'm, I'm just going to call upon the churches of our city to spend some time just covering our public safety officials. These are the watchmen's on the wall, these are the people that stand at the gate of our city, these are the people that run into trouble and run into fire, they come to us in our moment of great need, and to lose the ones that we've lost just recently, and since two years that we've been on, we've done this way too many times. And even a Kansas City firefighter who came into our city and tried to do something that he thought was righteous and good, it cost him his life. I just ask those of you who are here tonight or are listening, just take the time to cover our public safety officials in prayer. Their families know the risks that they all have, and this city, we've had, it's like a dark cloud over our city, and we need to, we need to pray that that be destroyed and stop this loss. this city, we've had, it's like, it's like a dark cloud over our city. And we need to, we need to pray that that be destroyed and, and stop this loss of people who are, when you look at the definition of servant, these are our true servants. They would lay their life down for you and I in a moment. Like I said, I don't care if they're driving home, driving to work. They're never off duty. They, their calling is to serve you and I. And I hope that tonight, when you lay your heads down, that you'll just ask for that protection over them as they patrol the streets and sit at the stations and, and monitor the comings and the goings of, of our city, the good, the bad, the ugly, the evil. So, I just wanted to say that tonight. I, I hope you'll, you'll join me in, in a time of just prayer and, and a little warfare over their lives. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. And we agree. I'd also like to, you know, honor firefighter Harold Jean Edin, who passed away last week from that accident. And that is tragic. We have lost too many of our public safety members. As a footnote, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this would be a good announcement too for those members here and those members watching. The service, I believe, is going to be Thursday. Is that correct, Minister of the Council member? Do we have any details on that yet?
There'll be a visitation Thursday evening and the memorial service on Friday.
And where will the visitation be and where will the memorial service be? Do we have that set yet?
Yeah. Still, still finalizing details on that.
Still finalizing it? But those are the dates so that people can be aware of it. So, and I'd encourage everyone here to be there and pay their respects for members of this community who really work hard to keep us safe. On a business note, our next meeting will be Wednesday, November ninth. So, that'll be our next meeting. We voted on that last meeting to make those changes. Also, just as a, an uplifting note, and I know we've saddened by the loss of our firefighter, I was not in office to make this announcement, but I just want to announce two grandchildren, if I may. And my first, or my, I actually have three grandchildren. Evelyn is our first and my second grandchild is Charlotte Grace. She was born on March eighth. So, she's born a day after my birthday. I'm saying that now because I didn't ever announce it from the diocese that she was born on March eighth because I was not mayor until April. But last Monday, it would have been about this time, actually, he was born just before halftime in the Chiefs Raiders game that did not lack drama, which they typically don't. His name is Truman James Patrick. So, he's my first grandson, so very proud of that. And there's no need to applaud, so that is okay. With that being said, seeing nothing else, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.